Ms. Walden?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Here. We do have a quorum present, so at this time we're going to proceed with the meeting. I only have a few comments I would like to make tonight, and that is, Mr. Tim Cox contacted me and wanted to set up a meeting in reference to blighted buildings here in the city of Milledgeville. He has a program he felt like he could help us out in managing that and give us some information to help us understand that a little bit better. So Mr. Griffin and myself will be meeting with him via conference call on Friday at 2:30, and to see what he's talking about and then see if we could bring him back in to come in and talk to council as well. So we will be doing that. Keep that in the back of your heads or in front of your minds, and let us know if you all, once we meet with them, would like to meet with him. I have been pressing on Mr. Griffin to also let Ms. Melanie Cook, I don't forgot Melanie's merit name, I think she came and spoke with you all before in reference to blighted homes and buildings, and so she did state she would come back, and I would like to see us be able to bring her back as well. The other thing that I have tonight is the zoning and boards and appeals. You all have all the resumes that's been sitting in. We've been asking if you have anyone else that would like to be on either one of these boards to let us know. I know Mr. Jordan said we needed to desperately go ahead and get one of them done, so if you will, please look at those resumes, let's make a decision, and try to go ahead and get that board in place. Other than that, you all see they're working hard down on Wayne Street, is that Wayne Street, trying to get that project done. Full speed ahead down in that area as well. And other projects that we have, if you looked at your notes, Mr. Griffin sent out for all of us to review, so please review those notes if you have any questions so you can get back with him. And that's going to be all that I'll have tonight, so at this time I'm going to turn it over to the city manager so he can introduce the speaker, I guess, presenter for tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. I think y'all can probably hear me. But previously you all passed a, and the mayor signed a recovery action plan for the Milledgeville Housing Authority. And based on that and some ongoing changes with the authority that Mr. Corcoran had been communicating with me and the mayor, we felt it would be a good idea to get an update. So tonight, John Corcoran, the Milledgeville Housing Authority Executive Director, is here to give us that update. So as he's coming up to the podium, I'm going to pull his presentation up, and he will go through his presentation, and then I'm sure be happy to take any questions from any of you that you have. You should be able to drive from there, John.
All right. Well, thank you for inviting me tonight. This is more of an interactive presentation, so if at any point you have any questions, feel free to stop me and ask your question. And what I presented, I'll go through tonight, but it's just the current status of our properties so that you're up to date, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. So let me start with Ray in Haversham. That was a project that was converted to RAD in 2018, and we've been going through the renovation process on the property. We have now completed 118 of the 149 units. The renovations ran about 10,000 per unit on the inside of the property. The major improvements, oh goodness, I misspelled something there horribly. My apologies. Spell check didn't catch that. The major improvements on the units were, basically all of the units now have central heat and air. Before, they had a combination of furnaces and through the wall, through the window air conditioners. We have 31 units that are expected to be completed by the end of April. The property is 75% occupied currently, and we have, we are working on 12 applicants and have over 200 people on the waitlist to active, that want to be part of the property. So once we do finish the renovations, that occupancy number should go up, and we should start going into some of the waitlist. And what I wanted to show you was just an example of our work. So on the left, what you have is the condition of a typical apartment complex, and on the right, you have what is the finished product. And that's just a typical kitchen. This is a typical bath. If you'll notice before, it doesn't really show it on here, but the bathrooms, the baths did not actually have a shower head. They were all just a faucet down at the bottom, and they did not have any surrounding for waterproofing, so when we redid the bathrooms, that's what we've done. So we've put up a shower head and then made it more of a tub enclosure. And let me stop there real quick, and I know I went through that really fast. Do you have any questions at Ray, or about Ray or Haversham? The other thing I would note too is, we did purchase some security cameras out at the properties, including Ray and Haversham. So what we have there right now is a system called Flock Safety, and it is a license plate capture system. So we have them strategically located through the property so that people drive through, it captures the license plate make and model of car. We've been working with the Milledgeville Police Department, given the murder that happened there several weeks ago at this point, we're looking at updating those cameras. And we are also, I have a meeting tomorrow with a security company to do some more 360 cameras that actually capture people with a point to zoom that the police department has requested. So I have that meeting tomorrow morning, and we'll be hopefully implementing that in the next 60 to 90 days. Yep. So we'll have different ones. We'll have the license plate capture going, capturing every entry and exit of the properties, and then we'll strategically put cameras, these 360 cameras, the point to zoom, in different locations so the police can have a pretty good view. All right, so I'll move over to Graham Homes. And then this is the property that we talked about for the recovery agreement. So currently, there's 102 of the 165 units are occupied out there. So as part of the recovery agreement, we had to do work to these units to get them back up to what's called React Standard, which is Real Estate Assessment Center Standards for HUD. To date, we have 69 of the 165 units have received that React correction work to them, and we are on pace to have the 100 units complete by the September 2021 in accordance with the recovery agreement. So we, and at the same time we're doing this, we're also getting ready to convert to RAD, which will kind of stop the recovery agreement because we'll be undergoing a massive renovation at the property. We are currently anticipating an April closing, or maybe an early May closing on the RAD transaction. We are down to the last two items with HUD to give us the green light to go. We're waiting on the State Historic Preservation Society to sign off on the, on tearing down a couple of the buildings out there, and there is a floodplain issue on the creek there, and we've had to have the EPA come in and help, yeah, the EPA, or FEMA, I'm sorry, FEMA come in and render an opinion on the location of the buildings and whether they'd be affected or not. So that's where we stand. So what I have here for you is up on Jefferson Street, we're going to be building three new buildings, we'll be tearing down the office and buildings along Jefferson, and we'll be building three buildings very similar to this on the front of the property. Unfortunately, we're not able to do new buildings throughout because of the funding that we received, so we'll be doing this renovation at the front, and we'll be doing major renovations to the properties at the back. So at Ray, I mentioned that we're doing about $10,000 to $12,000 a unit in renovations. The property there will be getting north of $50,000 a unit in interior renovations, so almost five times the amount of renovation. So we are basically going back to the studs, as they would say, and putting in all-new drywall, electrical, plumbing, and fixtures. So this is another rendering that we have. There were several buildings that have been torn down over time, and what we have are, we've come back and we're going to put in some newer-looking duplexes, so rather than side-by-side duplexes, they're going to be top and bottom duplexes, and those are the two-story buildings that you see there. I think we may have five to seven of those in total. This is a picture of what the leasing office will look like. And this is the current site plan. So what's going to be part of the RAD transaction and the tax credit conversion is basically everything to the west of the creek there. So that's where all the work will happen. Everything to the east of the creek, the housing authority is going to be left with 25 to 27 units at the end of the day to do something with. We've been in discussions whether we renovate them. I know we've had discussions about using it for homeless or supportive services, and what else we can do there. So we're still in that figuring-out process, but just so you know, those 25 units are not part of the RAD transaction. So you will start to hear, as we get closer to the closing, you're going to start hearing a lot about the relocation plan that we have at the site, and we've actually broken it up a little bit more this week, and I just haven't had a chance to update this slide. So, but we're basically going to go through five phases of relocation, and we've taken those five phases and we've divided it in half again. So now there's 10 phases of relocation. So the first phase is obviously moving residents from where the buildings are going to get torn down to units that we've just renovated to have them move into. And actually, the mayor and I went out probably two weeks ago and had a chance to look at one of those units that was being renovated, and they are in pretty good condition. And so our relocation plan is to not displace anybody from this, from the site. They will be moving all around within this community, but they will not go off of this location. And here's the relocation plan, so obviously the goal is to find quality, affordable housing that'll improve the health, education outcomes, and that's actually part of the grant that we're receiving. We got a grant from the Kresge Foundation to improve health and education outcomes as part of this renovation. To encourage physical activity, community socialization, and promote healthy lifestyles, again, that is part of that grant that we received. The relocation team has gathered information on the residents, community members, and to identify resident, desired amenities and determine how they'll be used in the community. We've participated in one-on-one meetings with the residents and have assessed individual needs, so our relocation team has actually met with every resident, whether in person or virtually now, and has identified the needs that they need in their unit to make sure that they're being housed properly, that there's not an underlying need that they have, whether it be grab bars in the shower or those types of things. So we're identifying those as we get ready to relocate them. The other thing I should mention as part of this is, there are, unfortunately, there are going to be several residents that get moved twice. So the unit, the residents that are in what's called R1 or Phase 1, the purple area, they will actually unfortunately be moved twice. So they're going to get moved to a temporary unit, and then they'll be moved to their new unit, or their permanent unit. But everybody else will only have to move once, hopefully. Let's see, we've held onsite and virtual resident meetings to inform the residents of the project plans, and including upcoming construction and relocation activities. We provide residents with designated relocation hotline and relocation email, so if there's any issues that the residents have with their relocation, they know to call that number, and they have the email, and if the city likes, I would be glad to share that number with you as well. The summary of the relocation plan, the renovation will be complete in five phases, beginning with Phase 1. Prior to the starting construction, the development team and the housing authority will prepare intern vacant units for temporary occupancy, and that's what I mentioned before, that we're going to be having, the people in that first phase have to move to a temporary unit, and then they'll move to their permanent. For construction to commence, all the units in Phase 1 will be emptied. Residents currently residing in Phase 1 will be temporarily relocated to a recently turned unit throughout the property, and we do not have, do not plan any relocation off-site. And actually, that was actually one of the comments that HUD had for us. They wanted to ensure that we're going to keep everybody on the site, so we've accommodated that. Once the renovations are complete in Phase 1, the relocation will empty phase by phase by moving the residents from Phase 2 to the new Phase 1. And then please note, this is, I think this is just a caveat that we fit in, which was, this is basically just a general summary. It's going to adapt, and that's the one thing that we realized when we did the Ray renovation, is our best plans are only our best plans, that we have to scramble and make stuff work. So this is what our intent is. If there's a major deviation, I'll make sure I try to communicate that to the city, but I'd be glad to come back and answer any questions, or if you have concerns from your constituents, please feel free to address them to me, and I'll take care of it. So the relocation plan, construction activities, including site improvements, are anticipated to take about 15 months. The renovations, along with the resident moves, will take approximately three months per phase. The current timeline is laid out here for you, so we have construction starting May 1. It would be completed for renovation, or completed for resident move-in on July 31st. Phase 2 would start August 1st and complete October 31st. Phase 3 would be November 1st through January 31st. Phase 4 is February 1st through April 30th, and then Phase 5 will be May 1st through July 31st. And on July 31st, we should be with construction, knock on wood, but we should have that done. And so as you hear names out here, I thought it'd be good to give you guys kind of a list of the participants that we have in the transaction. So obviously you have MHA, the Housing Authority, we're the general partner, we're the developer, we're a lender in the property, we're a ground lessor, so we're going to have the ground lease underneath the building, and we're going to be co-property manager. HDC will be the general partner as well, the co-developer, co-property manager, and this is just to note that the, under HDC is the Housing Authority de Cab, which gave 1.3 million of its capital funds to help make this transaction possible. RBC Capital Markets is our investor and purchaser of our tax credits, and they're investing about $21 million in the renovation of this property. We received a $3 million home loan from the Department of Community Affairs. Wallex Construction will be our general contractor. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Donnie Wallex, he's been around Milledgeville for quite some time. We have Bellwether, Freddie Mac, Bellwether is the servicer for Freddie Mac, they're our permanent lender at $4.7 million. And then we have Bank OZK, who is our construction lender, who's lending us $18 million to facilitate the transaction. Here, I've fed up the sources and uses of funds, again, it kind of restates what I just told you on the front end about the lender. The only thing you don't see up there is the construction lender because they bridge in the equity that we get to make sure that we have enough money to complete the project. The investor for the tax credits puts in so much money at closing, so much money at 50% completion, so much money 100% completion, so much money at permanent loan conversion, so we have to bridge that money as it comes in to make the construction work. So as you can see, the construction contract is about $22.5 million. Other development costs run about 3, 5.2 million. Developer fees were 3 million, and building and land costs were $5.3 million. So outstanding items, I think I mentioned this at the beginning, so what we're waiting on is the RAD conversion commitment, and so we call it the RCC. The, and I outlined this before, but basically, we're waiting on the State Historic Preservation Organization to sign the document. It is out for signature, everybody but, the State Historic Preservation has signed the document, we're just waiting on that to be done, and we finalized the revision to the floodplain map. FEMA is expected to approve the map this week. So once we get that RCC, we are basically on a 60-day countdown to closing, is our best estimate of when it's going to happen. So hopefully, if we get this next week, we'll be 60 days away from starting construction and renovation. And then that's another outstanding item is, the bonds that we're issuing will have to come back to MHA because they're the bond issuer, to set the final interest rate for taxes and bonds, and that'll happen either at the end of March or the end of April. The timeline, again, we're trying to close the end of April or beginning of May. Relocation would start in May of 2021, construction in May of 2021, and construction completion in July of 2022. And I'm open for any questions you guys might have about it.
I've got one. Go back to your, your map, if you will.
Yep. The relocation map or the site map?
So you said the Phase R5, the green area, will, will not be part of the RAD project. Does, does that area stay within the recovery agreement?
No.
Okay. So once RAD is complete, the recovery agreement is basically void?
Yes, unless HUD tells me something different, but that is my current understanding of the agreement.
So as, as people are moved out of their phase for remodeling, are the, the units in the green area, will that be some of the turned units you mentioned?
So the, the turn units we have are spread out throughout the property.
Okay, okay.
And so that's, it's really hard to say who's going to move when, because where they get moved to, some people are going to get moved into Phase 2, some Phase 3, some Phase 4, and some Phase 5, so it's really hard to know exactly when they're going to move. So, but we are putting together now, and what the residents should be presented with is that they should know what unit they're going to, and then we should have a good idea of what unit they're going to end up at. It's not going to be perfect right now because, again, we have, something may happen with the unit, we have, may swap something out, so, but we'll have a good idea of where it is.
And how much advance notice do they get for, for moving?
So we've already given them notice, but they will start getting, I think it's 60 days notice.
Thank you.
I have a question about Phase 5. So Phase 5 is just going to be something different that you all do?
Correct. So we're, we're trying to come up with what that's going to be right now.
Okay.
So when we're done with the, so what we're going to use Phase 5 for initially is to help house the relocation.
Okay.
So everybody that's living over there is going to stay over there now, and we have a few people moving into Phase 5 as part of the temporary relocation. But when we finish the project, Phase 5, which is the last phase, will be emptied out. And then we, I've been working with the board to come up with a plan that they like, and we've been floating different ideas, whether we just renovate the property and just provide affordable housing in that market. One of the ideas that's been floated has been using it for homeless housing or temporary housing. We'd obviously need to find a supportive service provider that can help us do that when it's not something we're going to be equipped to do, so we're, we're looking through different options.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that would be.
But yeah, so hopefully when, the idea, unless it gets changed, is that when we close on the RAD transaction, all of these parcels are released from HUD control, from the public housing side, and we move over to what's known as the Section 8 side of HUD. So HUD will still be involved, but just a different division of HUD.
Well, I was glad to hear that they're going to be located within the thing, because we were really concerned about, and some of the residents had expressed concern about just, they were thinking that if they were relocated to other parts of town, they wouldn't be, wouldn't have a chance to go back. So I'm really glad to hear that you're going to relocate everybody within the, within the area where they came from in the first place.
Yep. And again, we may have one-person slide, because if there's something happening with the unit, it doesn't happen, we may have to temporarily house somebody in a hotel or something, so there are going to be, there are the individual circumstances, I know they're going to happen, I can't predict what they're going to be, we're going to be as accommodating as we can.
We just didn't want to, wanted to cause a major adjustment in the census.
No, no, I have.
For those particular areas.
I agree and understand, and HUD actually had the exact same concern.
Okay.
I have a question too. My question is, how many elderly people do you have that, when you said some will have to do, because I think you shared with me one person, they got to move, and then what, eight months later, they're going to move a junior?
Correct.
How many of our elderly residents will have to make two moves?
I have not broken it down by elderly versus family, but I can get that information for you.
I was just kind of concerned to see, because you have some out there, pretty old enough in age.
Yes.
They've got to continuously move, and sometimes that disrupts their lifestyle.
Yep.
One move is enough if you're 79 or 80 or so, but they have to do it twice.
Yeah, and I can say, we are helping them move. We're providing movers to move their, their furnishings. So we are trying to make it, we're not saying you have to move and they have to move themselves and have to have family do it, although some do opt out, and they do ask that only their family moves them, and that's happened to us several times at Ray. The family's like, no, we don't want anybody else touching my mom's stuff or dad's stuff, we're doing it ourselves, and that's completely fine, and we provide them that information.
I think Dr. Lee had a question. Dr. Lee has a question.
I don't have a question, I really have a comment. And I would like to say that I appreciate what you all are doing. I know of two families that I have been following in this transaction, and one family has moved on, off of Charleston Street in a new renovated area. And this has really made a big difference for this particular family. Their self-esteem and everything was pretty low, but now they're happy, they're taking pride in where they're staying, they're showing their pictures of where they came from and where they are now at work, and it makes a big difference. You all have been, with the two families that I've been following, really have been accommodating them. You did help one family move furnishings and even pack some of their clothing. So I appreciate everything you have done to try to make our community better.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it, and I'm glad to hear the good comments, because I usually only get the bad ones, as I'm sure you guys do too, so I appreciate it.
I do know in Graham Homes, a lot of them are looking forward to, they've heard about what has taken place in Ray Homes and in Haversham, and they are really looking forward to what, what takes place with them, so, yeah, it's, you know, at first they were kind of skeptical, but after you started doing what you did in the Ray Homes, then of course, you know, people talk.
Yes. Really?
And then, and then, yeah, and they're seeing the before and after, so they're, you know, they're like, well, when is it our turn? When are they going to do ours? Are they not going to do ours anymore? So, yeah, they're looking forward to it.
So that's good. And then what we're, what we're talking about doing with the general contractors, we're going to try to do a model unit upfront initially, and invite people that are part of the renovation to come in and see what their new unit will, the standard it will be done to, so they get a good idea, as an idea of trying to encourage, there's a lot of hard feelings about moving.
Right.
There's a lot of people within, well, within Ray and Graham that have been long-term residents, and unfortunately, they may be like in a four-bedroom unit, and now it's just a grandmother living by herself, and she's got to downsize to a one. So we're going to have a lot of those instances, and we're going to try to work with them the best we can. We do have to abide by HUD's ruling, which is, and it's weird, it's going to sound odd, but it's one and a half people per bedroom. So that's our occupancy standard that we kind of have to go by. So if you're, if you're two people, you can qualify for a two-bedroom. If you're one person, you only qualify for a one-bedroom. So you're going to hear some instances like that, but we're, we're trying to do our best with that.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions?
So in the event that you have like a one elderly parent in a one-bedroom, and a child wants to come and stay to be able to help out, what's the allowance there? Are you going to allow that or are you not? Because that's been a question asked.
So it really becomes a question of whether they're deemed a caregiver or not. So if they're deemed a caregiver, and HUD has another weird wrinkle to it, is that they consider the couch an extra bedroom. So, and trust me, the HUD So, and trust me, the HUD manual is very detailed. So it just going to depend on the circumstances. It's also going to depend on what units we have available at the time. Technically, an elderly person with a younger caregiver can qualify for a two-bedroom and get moved there if that person's deemed their caregiver. And we do have a whole process that we do go through for that.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you guys so much for inviting me, I appreciate it, and I'm welcome to come back anytime.
Let me ask you one more question.
Oh, no, please.
And it's, it doesn't have anything with this, but are, so are we, are you all still doing the process with, is it the Millersville matter that you, are you still?
So it's still kind of going. We're working on it, it's been delayed, is the best way to say it. But the Housing Authority itself is not involved in the transaction, other than the issuance of the bonds.
Yep, that's right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just keep it over there, I think I can talk loud enough to think in here. I've never not been loud enough, so I think I'll probably be okay.
It's your, it's your next, your report.
I just want to add a couple of other things as part of my report. Just today, our utility maintenance crew and public works were working together to look at even some more options with our situation on the 100 block of North Wayne Street. They did some additional excavation today. And it appears that some of what will need to be do, done, that our staff can do. We will ultimately need to install at least one more manhole that we'll have to have a utility contractor to do. But based on what has been determined so far today, and will be worked on most likely through the end of Wednesday, may, maybe as, as far as noon on Thursday, but they're going to work to try to get it done tomorrow, so we can open the parking spaces back up. The, the contractor work that will need to be done there could possibly not be as extensive as, as what I had previously shared with you, which is, which is good news. I'll continue to keep you informed as to what's going on with that issue as, as we move forward with the, with the needed repairs. The really good thing about what happened today is, if you remember, we were looking at a temporary fix that was going to be fairly expensive in its own right. And the work that has been done so far today, and, and hopefully will be completed tomorrow, Thursday by noon at the latest, may create, may, may make that temporary work not necessary, which would be a good thing, too. So it's an interesting situation down there. It's, it's something that I think has been an issue for quite some time, based on what you see with the infrastructure down there. And I will keep you all informed as to what's going on with that, as they continue to work on it in the next day, today and a half. Additionally, I've shared some information with you related to an IGA with the Department of Corrections for some water line replacement. About three-quarter finished with that draft, and then we'll send it to Mr. Jordan for him to, to make any corrections that are necessary. And then, we will run that by the Department of Corrections and make sure we are all in, in agreement with it, and then bring it back to you all in two weeks for, for meeting. I mean, for a vote for approval of that, of that IGA. I think it's going to be advantageous to the city to be a part of that IGA. And as, as I share it with you prior to the vote, I'll have a lot more specifics with it, but I can assure you, I will not, I will not share it with you immediately prior to the vote. You'll have it for, hopefully, a week to take a look at before it will be voted on at the March 23 meeting. Phase 2 of the water and sewer transfer will be occurring at the end of the next meter reed cycle. Things were not where they needed to be for the county when we finished this most recent meter reed cycle. And it's a lot easier on us and a lot easier on the customers if we don't make those transfers until the end of a meter reed cycle. So we're, we're approximately, it turns out to be about 23 days out from that. But that Phase 2 should be completed by that point in time. If you remember, that is the Waters Edge subdivision, as well as a few houses that front Log Cabin and are on the north side of Log Cabin. That will be Phase 2. Phase 3 will be everything east of Jefferson Street on Sinclair Dam Road. And then Phase 4 will be everything north of the four-way stop at Jefferson and Log Cabin. So we continue to work through those. Phase 4 is going to be probably the most extensive transfer in terms of some valves that need, that will need to be inserted, and some additional meters that will need to be installed. And lastly, we currently have a pension committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, March 17, at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, that has been advertised. And if that changes, then I will let you all know. But with that, I will answer any questions that any of you have on those subjects or anything else that I shared with you in the City Manager's Report prior to the end of last week. I'm not aware, Mayor, of anything we need to go into closed session for. I checked with Mr. Jordan earlier today, is that still your opinion, Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything that would require a closed session.
Okay. So unless there are questions for me, that concludes my report. And that'll give us a chance to have a little breather between the two meetings, so.
Are there any questions or comments or concern from anyone?
I, I have a question for Mr. Jordan. Just, and I'm, just out of curiosity, after the, and this is about the legislature, after the crossover date, is it too late to send anything up there that, like any changes that we needed to make?
Typically, as I understand it, would be too late. I think, as we all know, there are mechanisms by which, in the past, we have seen legislation introduced that has somehow, for lack of a better word, I guess, crossed over without, after the so-called crossover.
Right.
I am not sure if that, whatever that procedural maneuver is that they have used, that the legislature has used in previous years, whether or not that applies to local legislation. But I can, I can inquire of that if you would like, or hang can, or... But you don't see, typically see it with local legislation. You don't see it a lot anyway, but it, it definitely can happen. There is a procedural process, I guess, because it's happened. Probably happens every, every General Assembly, if somebody wants...
I don't have a problem with sharing exactly what it is that I'm talking about, because I'm sure everybody's curious, but, you know, I was listening to the news and where, I think it was the City of Warner Robins, talked about the fact that their council had not received a salary increase in two and a half decades. We're about at that here with the City of Millersville. And I was just curious to know if that was something that, that the council would be interested in if there was a way that we could go ahead and get it in this legislative session, so that it would apply to the next council? If that was something that anybody else besides myself, and I know Ms. Walden and I talked about it, getting that in before is completely too late? Just a thought, you know, you all can tell me how you feel about it.
We're having a pension committee meeting on the 17th, too. We need to look at the retirement for the, for the council, because that hasn't been increased in years.
So, at least 20 years.
And that is, the pension benefit, Ms. Walden would, and I will, I will double-check this, is probably a home rule issue that would not require...
Legislation.
Legislation. Ms. Shinholster, I am not sure about if that same home rule provision would apply to an increase relative to mayor and council compensation. But I can take a look at that, and obviously, it is something that, as you all know, would not go into effect until the next election, which of course, the next term, which would be 2022. But I can take a look at that. I cannot, and Ms. Shinholster, you may, you may remember this. The last time an increase was, was done, I can't remember if that was done through the legislature or through home rule.
I can't remember either, that's why I brought it up to you, because I wasn't really sure. But I know that I have been, as long as I have been on council, and, and Ms. Walden can testify to that, too, there has not been a salary increase. So that's, that's like about 20 years. So I don't know, I'm, I'm about like the Warner Robins. I don't know anybody that has worked for 20 years at the same salary, without having any type of increased cost of living or otherwise. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and, you know, get some feedback on it, or see how quickly we can address that, or what can we do to get that done, if you all are in favor of it.
Jason, I think there was an increase between '93, when I got off, and 2006, when I got back on, but I can't tell you when it was. But I'm thinking it's probably sometime in the late 90s.
It was in the 90s. It, it wasn't in the 2000, from 2000 up to this point, it hasn't been one.
Well, I think I was about 12.
So you can't remember everything, can you?
So that would be something that time is of the essence.
Right.
Really need to be trying to get that.
Mr. Jordan, if it's all right with you, I'll dig into that on some stuff we've got from GMA and share with you what, what I find, and then you can, if you have any questions from a legislative standpoint.
Yeah, and the quickest way for me to, to get a definitive answer, I can contact General Counsel at GMA, and they will, they will know the answer to that.
We need to, we need to do it before, before we qualify to run again, too.
Yes, ma'am.
That was all that I had.
The other piece with Ms. Jackson, did you have any? You haven't heard anything on that one from Mr. Williams, have you? That you want to give a report on?
Done.
All right, then, if there's no further items to discuss, we have about 15 minutes. First time in a long time.
Really?
So at this time, I'm going to move to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Back it.
Call a road clerk. Mr. Denuser?
Yes, ma'am, totally. To adjourn, Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee? Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden? Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.